Rise for the pledge allegiance.
I just don't like leaving things in the car. I just, I don't need it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda for tonight, please? Some of it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. I'd like to turn the microphone over now to Dr. Harrison for his district update and superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone, and I hope everyone enjoyed the lovely spring/summer-like weather that we probably would have appreciated about two weeks ago during spring recess, but certainly nice to see everyone. A few things that I would like to report upon this evening, and then, you know, to consider that we have a significant topic before us in discussing about the next steps in our budget development. But I would like to, as a reminder, and hopefully many people have seen this, but we are very fortunate that on April 18th, Young Zhao is going to be coming to our area. He is an acclaimed author of world-class learners, educational researcher and college professor. He will be joining us. The event is being sponsored by Irvington, Ardsley and Dobbs Ferry in a nice cooperative effort. His address will be held in Ardsley, and we certainly have seats available to our community members and would love to see folks there. If you haven't already signed up, we'd encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity. There is information posted on our district website and our Facebook page. We request that you do RSVP in advance, and from the flyer that you'll find on those two sources, there is a hyperlink to the registration form. So please, consider joining us. We'd also like to, and this seems like it was many, many moons ago, congratulate our girls' basketball team on their successful run to the Federation Championship. The girls defeated Cardinal O'Hara High School from Buffalo on the 20th of March in Albany to win the Class B Federation Championship. This is the team's third such victory in the past four years, and they're, of course, it complements their four consecutive state titles that we celebrated already. We do want to acknowledge the fact that the team has accumulated a 25-2 record this year and over the past four seasons assembled a 39-1 postseason record. Certainly congratulations to Lady Bulldogs and our coaching staff, and we look forward to recognizing them at a future Board of Education meeting. As we have discussed in the past, we are preparing to release the Space Utilization Study the end of this week in concert with our, this week mailer. We will release the draft of the Space Utilization Study, which was commissioned by the board back at the beginning of the school year. We have to say, this is a very lengthy, detailed report that it's going to take a lot of time for everyone to process, digest and begin to understand. We're talking about hundreds of pages of documents and data with a summary report and possible scenarios for the community to consider. So we recognize the conversations, that there's going to be some challenges associated with it, but quite honestly, we welcome those conversations and we are committed to approaching this, as I've said in the past, in a very analytical way to make the best decision, not only for our children, but for all of the taxpayers in Irvington. So we would encourage you to take a look and begin to review that report when it's released at the end of the week, and then know that in not-too-distant future, but hopefully before the end of the school year, we will welcome Dr. Saversky, who is the author of the study, to join us in the community to give a presentation on not only his findings, but some of the scenarios that he would like for us to consider, and then from that point, we'll outline a process to engage our community, staff, parents, non-parents, Irvington, Terrytown residents, to contribute to the dialogue as we process what all that means to us. There's a lot of exciting things going on in our schools in the very near future. I'm sure one thing that our students and staff are very excited for is that we're going to begin our state testing in grades three through eight next week with ELA, and then the following week, on Wednesday, the 24th, we'll start with our math. As always, we always like to remind our students to make sure that they are well-nourished in the morning and get plenty of sleep and stick to their regular routines to help them manage this difficult, stressful time, but we're confident that they will do well. When we look to this time of year, we also have to consider that there are just so many wonderful events going in our schools, events that are celebrations of the learning that's occurred all year, and just to highlight a few of them, that tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, we have Peer Leadership Day, the field day here outside, hopefully, weather-dependent, of course. On Thursday, at 7:30 in the theater, we have the Middle School, High School Spring Band Concert. Then Friday and Saturday, 7 o'clock, the Middle School Spring Musical that we would encourage you to attend. Monday, 7 o'clock, we have the Cumulati Reception in the Mara Lounge. The 18th, which is Thursday, we have the Middle School, High School Spring Orchestra Concert, and then finally, at the end of next week, we have the Famous Auto Awards at 7:30 in the theater. Each of those events promises to be exciting and a wonderful celebration of many different aspects of our student-school experience, so we'd love to see you at some of them. So please mark your calendar if you're free. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I guess before we go to the consent agenda, is there anything, oh, I'm sorry, well, we could do that. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment on anything on the agenda tonight, with the exception of the budget presentation? We'll take public comment after Dr. Harrison makes the budget presentation. So does anybody want to comment on anything else? Okay, here, oh, sorry?
Sorry, Tom, just real quick. I wanted to make sure everybody knows that the Spring Band Concert for Middle School High School is actually due to take on April 30th, so it's not, it's not the last one.
Thank you.
Yes. Change there.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Does anyone on the board want to pour anything out of the consent agenda before we?
Yeah. 9.8, just because I'm gonna, I'm not gonna.
You want to vote on separately?
Yes.
Okay. Before we take the consent agenda and then 9.8 separately, I want to thank the IEF, the PTSA and Gloria Oster for the contributions that we are accepting tonight. Thank you again, and we continue to take donations. Thanks, thanks again. Okay, can I have a motion to accept everything on the consent agenda except for 9.8?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, five zero. Can I get a motion to accept item 9.8 on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it's four and one abstention. Now, having completed the consent agenda, moving on to Dr. Harrison and our budget presentation.
We began many, many months ago outlining what our needs were in a line-by-line approach. In doing so, we recognized a number of challenges that we had back in March. We then came forward with a recommendation to the Board of Education, and in doing so, we outlined a number of reductions that were being made and also began to identify other possibilities should we want to go further and to identify potential savings for our community. And within this, there's a story. The story talks about what's happened in the past and best intentions, looking at difficult fiscal time, trying to maybe right-size some aspects of our district. There was a great desire to try to contain spending. Many reductions came our way. Then the tax levy cap came before us, which caused some more complications. So we looked at a situation where the district was scaling back for a number of years, and when we were looking at that reduction, then we started to recognize there could be concern. If we look at caps on the budget, that cap could hinder us if we had growth. That cap could hinder us if we want to go back and restore some of those valuable programs that we may have reduced or eliminated at one point in time. So when we started to look at our budget, we started to find layers and layers of challenge. We looked at what it would take to try to maintain the services that we have before us, the services that deliver the education to our children every single day, and we recognized that we'd be over the cap by approximately $2 million. So we then tried to really understand why and help the community understand why those challenges were before us, and it was pretty clear-cut. We looked at hedging contributions increase. Essentially, the district is getting a bill from Albany that's going to show an increase in our contributions year-over-year of over $1 million. We're looking at health insurance increases about 7.5 percent. That's 7.5 percent equates to about $4 billion. We have an obligation to pay some tax certs. We have some potential exposure that runs through next year. That exposure is a sum of between $3 and $4 million. We clearly recognize that the district cannot just simply write a check. The district has to find a way, put some short-term value, to be able to accomplish this. And in doing so, we recognize that we have to do so in a way that is going to be responsible, not extend debt over long periods of time, but also not have major impacts on the district. So in doing so, we're looking at possible expenditures and financing of about $700,000. So when you look at the sum of the first three items here, those three items equate to about $2 million. People should begin to understand where we are. And then we always have a couple wild cards that could occur every year, special education services. We certainly have an obligation to provide additional services where necessary for our students with disabilities. There's always a question mark. We have a good family that moves into town. If there's a child that suffers a traumatic injury during the school year, we have obligation, and there's a question mark and always an uncertainty about what impacts that could have on the budget. So with that said, we headed down this path of reduction. We headed down the path of efficiency, and our first step was administration stepped back and identified savings of about $500,000. Those were reductions, and if you remember back to other presentations, if you want to, at another time, go and review some of them, there was a list of items, some items that ranged from about $55, $55 all the way up to things that were $90,000. We went line by line, finding opportunities where we could find savings. And included in those reductions were bus monitors, and that has become a point of discussion which we'll come to in a few moments. But there's a bigger story here, something that we have to talk about, something that maybe we haven't talked about enough, but it's other efforts that are behind the scenes, layers behind the budget and the efforts, things that take place on a regular basis through our business office. Ms. Miller works diligently on a regular basis to try to find savings. So when we're talking about challenges financially, we just don't wait for budget season to find opportunities to save money. She's constantly doing that on a daily basis. And when we look at this list here, we identify initiatives that has been taken by Beverly that has had huge impacts on our district. She renegotiated all of our copier leases. We're looking at $100,000 annual savings just over copying machines. A new workers' comp model that we've initiated that the board has approved that's going to save us $90,000 in the first year and has the potential of greater savings down the road. We're entering into an energy conservation initiative. As you move around different places in our schools, you will see that there are a variety of different light fixtures where we're testing some LED technologies that will certainly reduce, excuse me, reduce our reliance on electricity and minimize those costs. Beverly also wrote a grant for state records, for records management with the state of New York. We have layers and layers of obligations and requirements for maintaining records, just being a public entity, and as you can imagine, that storage and the maintenance of that becomes a burden for a small staff that we have in our district. Beverly wrote a great grant that's been successful. We're looking at over a two-year period of time, $50,000 to $60,000 that's going to go, it's going through the process of inventorying all of our documents that are required to maintain by law, but then it's also going through digitizing all of those records for us. So we're no longer thinking physical space, we're no longer thinking managing paper and boxes, but now we're talking about digital files that will be backed up, easily accessible and here for every, for years to come. We centralized the district mailing system, which eliminated postage meters that were spread out around the district. We negotiated lower fees for our existing meter, which saved the district a total $12,000. We have a number of shared service initiatives which are kind of embedded into everything that we do. Beverly has really pushed us to increase our purchasing through Bosse's. So when we look at some of the purchasing, well, upfront, the cost may not be any tremendous savings, but those expenses then become payable depending on the type of service that we're purchasing, and then when we look at the following year, we're getting Bosse's aid back from the state that offsets future expenditures. We have a tremendous collaboration within the Quad Villages. Our partnership with transportation saves us an estimated $300-plus thousand a year in terms of scales of economy and efficiencies that we're able to acquire by partnering services with our neighboring districts. We're involved in sharing professional development services with them, so when we think of opportunities where we need to bring folks in to work with consultants, to work with our staff, we're able to share those expenses with other districts and other parent programs. So you think of the Young Zhao promotion that I gave a little while ago, another opportunity where we're sharing those services. So with that said, when we step back and we look at the proposed budget that I put forth, we recognize that while there are challenges, we're still finding lots and lots of opportunity to grow experiences for our children. We're not eliminating any existing programs, personnel or services. We're definitely investing in infrastructure and our facilities. We are supporting the growth and development of our staff. We have a rich professional development program that Dr. Core is going to be leading for us that is embedded throughout our budget. We're expanding technological opportunities. Not only are we completely building out wireless networks on the campus and rebuilding and updating our infrastructure in our schools to be able to support future technologies that we want to implement, but we're reintroducing a technology program in our elementary school to recognize the needs and challenges that our children are going to have in these areas. We're also looking to add a full-time assistant principal back at Dowslane. We've discussed at great length the need to be able to support teachers, to be able to support students' needs, to work with families, but also from a pure management standpoint of a large school building. But the bottom line here, we're looking at a situation where this is a budget that's balanced. We consider fiscal responsibility here. We believe it's a responsible budget to come forward with, but it preserves the educational quality for our students. An overview of our budget, when we're looking at where we are, you can certainly see that there is growth. We're looking at a change of $2.7 million, which represents a 5.3% to 3.6% budget increase year-over-year, but we do want to note what's on the bottom, that this does include that financing for the tax certs. So as we move through this process, we identified the savings that we're looking for. We recognize the challenges. I said, I came forward with a proposed budget. There was a question about bus monitors and dialogue that I'm sure will continue tonight, but there was also a call from many members of our community that we have to think about what are the opportunities we can really take advantage of here. Many folks asked us to come forward and try to be ambitious and look to claim opportunity rather than focus on the contraction in our district that we've seen over the past years. Now let's seize this moment to expand opportunities and really maximize the opportunities that may be before us. So with that said, there were a series of items that we put forth. Originally discussed as one of our ambitious options was the assistant principal position, which you can see I included on an earlier slide because there seemed to be unanimous support. So we've worked that into our existing numbers. But we also talked about a maintenance position. We recognize that we have a lot of square footage. We have a lot of grounds that have to be maintained, and in Irvington schools, we have one dedicated maintenance worker. We outsource a lot of our services. We have custodians that chip in and do a lot of the groundskeeping along with him, but we really could benefit from the opportunity to add to that staff. In doing so, we recognize that certainly we're going to be able to better maintain our buildings. We recognize that we can offset a lot of these expenses by looking at expenditures that we're sending out inside right now, that we, things that we can accomplish inside. But we also have to think about better maintained buildings, more comfortable facilities, safer facilities will have a better impact on our students, and certainly will improve the quality of the learning experience. When we look at other options that have been discussed, there was a recommendation to contemplate adding another half-time guidance position. We currently have three full-time guidance counselors at the high school, two at the middle school and a full-time guidance chair, but the asterisk to the guidance chair position, that it's 50% of its salary is offset by a contribution from Bosse's, where we share some services and our guidance chair oversees the scheduling process for the Bosse's students. So here, we are looking at a situation that we could look to reclaim that, but possibly at the same time, still have that relationship with Bosse's and provide them with the support that they desire to best integrate their programs and their students into our schools. We also talked about the need to increase electives. When we go back a couple presentations ago, I identified that since 2009, we've reduced 19 electives from our high school, and that's had an impact on our students. In some cases, it was individual classes; other cases, it was the quantity of sections of a particular class. So there was conversation here about what we could do to try to provide some opportunity to expand opportunities for our students. And I have to say, it's a complex process. It's tied to student interests, it's tied to the scheduling process, it's tied to enrollment, and in doing so, we look at the areas where we have electives. Dr. Core has really delved into this with Dr. Mosenthal and the guidance staff, and we've identified areas where we really think there could be some opportunity. Aside from all the areas you see before you, science, math and the arts really stood out as opportunities where we could identify additional sections that could be added or to reintroduce some courses. Dr. Core, would you mind speaking to the work you've done on this course?
Sure. So Dr. Mosenthal and Mr. Erickson and I met, and we just looked at where we see opportunity, and that opportunity is linked to staffing. So where do we have available staff? Where do we have high-cost requests? So what courses have we not run, or what sections have we not run in the last year or in previous years that we know the demand is there? So right now, the three areas that seem the cleanest and the clearest were science, math and fine arts. It doesn't mean we can't consider the other areas, but they would definitely be more complicated from a staffing point of view, as well as whether we have enough student requests at this point.
Thank you. So there was also a suggestion that came from the board to consider the impact that we could have on our schools from increasing clerical staff positions. At one point in time, we had more support than we do today, and those positions had been reduced to 10 months, and we recognize there's a lot of challenges that come with opening the schools. We identify that we could look at Dowslane, for example, and that there's times during the summer that it could be Randy in the building by himself when his assistant takes vacation. When we think about preparing for teachers to come back, there's only Randy and one other person that's organizing those efforts. When we think about folks that move into the community and it doesn't have to be focused on elementary schools, it could be any one of our schools, those folks need attention. They need assistance. They need to be well-oriented to our schools and our programs and help their children to start the year off properly. And in doing so, there was that consideration of looking at what the impact would be, and we'd be looking at high school, middle school and Dowslane. High school could present an interesting scenario because you have to consider all the athletics and the extracurricular programs that get launched at the beginning of the school year, and that there's a lot of process of paperwork and physicals that have to be well-documented. Mr. McCormick needs help in the athletic office, aside from the new student piece that we already referenced. So there's a lot lying on a few folks during the summer, and very clearly, with the addition of these positions, we would be able to have a great impact on not only all of our staff and to have efficient operations in our school, but be able to support the needs of our students and their families as we move through the summer. Then finally, I think probably the one that caught most of our eye was the discussion of looking at bus monitors. We considered all the recommendations and the data that had come from the Budget Task Force Subcommittee on Transportation and their recommendations, and as I indicated, was included in my original recommendation to the Board of Education was to reduce the monitors, but there's been conversation and concern. From an administrative standpoint, we were comfortable and confident that we could deliver safe transportation services on a daily basis for all of our children, but some felt that the monitors are a service that we like to have and that we should have in Irvington. So that led us to come back and contemplate this situation again, and in doing so, there were two different options that were discussed. One was looking at providing some part-time support in these areas, whether we looked at maybe bringing back half of the monitors and we could assign that to school buses on a rotating basis, or to retain all of the bus monitors. From a logistics standpoint, I can say that obviously bringing them back would be much easier. It introduces some burdens administratively and some concerns with respect to appropriate protocols and management if we were to do it on a half-time basis, but surely, half-time would provide greater services than none at all. But with that said, this is kind of a list of options. It would have gone on from slide to slide, we tried to play out every single scenario, but this in some ways is considering that stereotypical Chinese food memory, we're menu, we're picking one item from one column and one from another, to help us consider what the impacts would be in looking at different options that are before the board, what the impact would be on the overall budget, budget increase, tax rate increase, levy increase. So there's a lot to process here, and maybe as we have our conversations, this is a slide that we could flip back to. But this week here, Beverly did, I think, a fine job with encapsulating a lot of the different scenarios that are before us. So in summary, we look to what we proposed thus far to be a responsible budget. We are truly, truly committed to containing costs despite the fact that in the previous slides, you saw increases in the range of 5%, 5.5%. But what we have to look at is big picture. We have to look at what's happened over the past five years, and during that period of time, you can see that we've only had budget growth of 1.31%. We face a lot of challenges associated with unfunded state mandates and costs that are driving our budget, certainly in ways that we can't control, but really, I think the story to tell here is despite that challenge, we're committed to preserve the quality of our education. We're committed to finding opportunities to introduce new learning experience for our children and to improve upon some of those that exist. And with that said, I think that we have a lot of valuable conversation before us tonight and the opportunity to begin to consider what those things are that we value and those things that we think we need to bring forward at the next Board of Education meeting, which you can see is on the 23rd of April. At that point in time, the board must adopt a budget, a spending plan that we will go forward to the voters with. So tonight, it leaves us with a charge and a challenge to identify those areas that you see critical and important for us to include in the budget. There are a couple other planned budget presentations and discussions between now and then, and I'm sure there'll be others added, but tonight, our focus and charge is to identify what it is that we value. We've come to terms on things thus far, but now we have this list before us of those things that we may want to consider, whether it's the maintenance position, guidance, electives, clerical and bus monitors. Mr. Greddus, the conversation is yours, and I think we move forward.
Great, thank you very much. I guess before the board dives into talking amongst ourselves about various additions, subtractions to get us to a final budget, I guess I'd like to do is hear from the community first, and, you know, we could take the, the...
I have two questions related to the presentation.
Sure.
Sorry.
No, sure.
The first question is just about the electives, the two different options, because obviously, the options are somewhat determined by what we can actually do, and you indicated challenges just in terms of how we would actually make that work. Does that suggest that we only would need 39... Does that suggest that we only would need $39,000 or $37,000, and that the $49,000 is kind of hope and conjecture because we probably couldn't use that because of the considerations that you described?
Just arbitrarily, I just plugged in those.
That's right, yeah.
For a budget standpoint, you could put in whatever, I use that as a placeholder for a dollar value, because I don't have any idea what the cost would be for a specific class, depending on the teacher and their salary, et cetera. So again, it would be whatever amount of money that you decide to put in the budget, we would have to work around.
So is there any way for you guys to figure out, I guess over the next week or so, like how each of those numbers were? I mean, it's hard to make a decision when we're just looking at a number, not to know how that manifests, what that translates to.
So I think that the complication is that because it is based on course requests, and what happens is that it depends on what other classes students get, so...
And who, and choices they make.
Right. So, I mean, I think the best example, and the example that we probably feel the most comfortable with, is the addition of a section of studio art. That, if that's sort of a no-brainer, we know we have the course request, we know kids need that course, so that course would be, you know, as long as we had a teacher who was willing to do that course, we would feel comfortable saying. But the other course is not necessarily, so it's not...
So let me, hypothetically, I mean, if we vote, if we opt for the scenario with a lower placeholder dollar value, and when you guys are scheduling, and you might feel like, wow, if we only had one more class, I mean, wouldn't it be possible, even if it's not in the budget, to just, with board approval, say, okay, you know, we're going to add an extra session and we'll take it out of the general fund or something for, you know, $7,000?
So last year, what we did was we had those floating sections, and what that did was it gave the high school that opportunity to have the flexibility to make those decisions. So that would be a similar, it sounds like that's a similar scenario.
So, we could pick $37,000, we could pick $49,000, we could split the difference and pick something in the middle and, and kind of say, use your best efforts when you're doing it to come up with the best scenario, correct?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's, at least the way I saw it.
So we don't really have to...
We make sure the money's there, but we're not going to know exactly what that translates to, but they know that they have the money to use for the electives that the kids want.
Right, so we don't really have to hang our hat on one of those two numbers.
And for the communities, for the community, if we budget X and we only spend X minus whatever, that money rolls over into our fund balance and is used to offset other costs. So, it's not as if we, we don't need to spend the money is the point.
And out of curiosity, the money that was put aside for this year for those floating classes, was it used?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, so, Dr. Mosenthal?
Sorry?
What did we end up, the floating, the floating sections this year, was it additional span, and what did we end up adding?
That was a Spanish...
And then, and then you added the other 0.2 for art.
Thank you.
My question, I did, I just...
Go ahead.
Comment or question?
Questions, I guess.
I have a comment, I have a thought, I don't have a question. Or no, I'll pose it in the form of a question.
In the form of a question.
So...
Jeopardy.
Yeah, right. So, I, we've all talked about the art of proposing a budget to the community, and this art form is now taking on an additional tax levy at this juncture, and we're looking at a four and a half percent tax increase without changing anything, that includes the $64,000 in new state aid. So we kind of just spent that money, is that correct? So, we're not reserving it, we're spending it. So, I'm looking at, since our last meeting, we've kind of miraculously spent another $64,000 that the state gave us without any kind of discussion. I'm concerned that we now have a, we have the community and the board and the administration saying we need another half of a guidance position, and we need some more electives, and we need, you know, a 12-month-a-year clerical. And we want either $45,000 to maintain either morning or night bus monitors, but not both, or we can go to $90,000 and have bus monitors all along. And I keep saying to myself, I look at this a little differently. So therefore, it's, all these added up means it's what, 90, 110, 150, like 220 or something like that? So, you know, we're now going to go to the community who isn't in this meeting and say, we need you to, you were looking at four and a half percent, well, really, we want to go to 5%, all right? And now we have to get what percentage of the community to vote?
60%.
60, all right? In the back of my mind, personally, Jim McCann sees that the reason why we have these problems is the cost of our employees goes up without stopping, okay? The state says, we're going to guarantee the pension benefits for our employees even though no one else in America gets these guarantees, the state has ladled that onto us. So, community, just fork up another million dollars, I find it disgraceful, all right? We have, we have contractual obligations that this board pretty much agreed to, all right? And it is what it is. And so I'm just wondering, now that the, the employees are getting raises when no one else in America is getting raises, and getting guaranteed 8% returns on their pension when no one else in America is getting it, can't we turn around and ask the employees to create a furlough system as we did a year or two ago, to the tune of $220,000 to pay for these things? Well, and, and my feeling is, I would feel very comfortable going back to the employees and saying, are you interested in doing this for us? And let them decide.
I think you just did.
And, okay, and then, and then if we, if they did come around and say, we will take on that furlough system, we can then go back to the community and say, everybody's taken a bite of this bad sandwich, so to speak. We're going, we're raising taxes on ourselves, the employees are taking a hit at their own, you know, decision, and we're providing the greatest education we can in an environment where no one really likes the finances that are going on in this country. So to me, I would wonder, is there any support on the board to go back and ask the employees, would they take a furlough day?
Let's, I just want to get a couple more facts out there, because, I mean, you said a lot of things.
That was the longest question I've ever asked.
No, I know, but you said a lot of things, but it's, it's important in dealing with all of our employment contracts, that people understand what's happened over the last years. One of the things, you talk about going to the community and explaining why we need to go over the tax cap. We need to go over the tax cap not because of raises that our employees are getting, we need to go over the tax cap because of the unfunded mandates that we have no control over. Our teachers have not had a raise in four years. Our administrators, no, it's true, our teachers, they've been on, they've been on 0% for four years. Our...
Some people would debate that, but we don't have to debate it tonight.
But they've had steps, they haven't had raises.
They haven't had raises, there's been step increases.
A teacher who is on top step has not had a raise.
Has not had a raise.
I accept that. And some people have, all right? Through, through step raises, except for column changes.
Okay, I'll finish my point. The administrators have been, have not had a raise in three years, our custodial and clerical unions have had freezes for the last two years. So, you know, to go back now to ask for concessions that frankly were given, you know, as part of our new teacher's contract, there were over $2 million worth of embedded concessions that are part of that that we're realizing right now, that they're not in the form of furlough days that we could point to, but over the, over the four-year term of the, the teacher's contract that was negotiated, there was essentially $500,000 a year in give-back from the teachers. Now, I'm not suggesting that that's a reason, I mean, we, we could discuss your idea, but there has been give-back from our unions already that people, you know, I'm not sure the community, you know, properly understands.
I, I accept that, and, and, and so, that's one way to look at it, all right? I look at it as, and again, this is my convoluted theory on life, but realistically, for the last 10 years, all right, no one in America has had their pensions increase in the tune of 401Ks or IRAs, all right? Because the stock market, which is invested in the pensions, is flat-lined. On the other hand, the employees, the state, you know, education employees have pretty much had their pensions double in that time period. And so if the, for argument's sake, the average pension is $100,000, it's now $200,000, all right, over that 10-year period. That's just what the numbers are, okay? So I'm just saying, if we're going to ask, turn around and ask people to take a furlough day, all right, and they might not have gotten a true increase through Bob's logic, all right? They have certainly gotten a dramatic increase in their retirement dollars, all right, as an occurrence of this. So I'm just saying, if we want, if we want to turn around and go to the community and say, we'd like you to take a 5% tax increase so we can get all these things that we're proposing, as opposed to a 4.5% increase, we should ask the employees if they want to participate. That's all. They can turn us down, all right? But the one, the biggest line item in our budget is, is labor costs, and we're not asking anyone in the labor cost pool to give up anything to attain this. So I'm like, all right, if you don't want to do it, that's okay. But I'm saying, why...
No, I hear, I hear exactly what you're saying. My, my only point is, is if you're going to say, well, ask the teachers or the clerical workers or the administration to give something, my only point to you is, and it, it's just fact, it's not, it's not my opinion of it, that factually, they've given $2 million back to the district over these four years. So but for the concessions as part of the collective bargaining agreement that we met, our budget would be $500,000 higher this year.
Bob, I accept that logic. I'm talking about the pension benefits that the, that the employees have gotten that no one else in the world has gotten.
Yeah, I, I understand, but that's also something that we, as, I mean, you mentioned that, that suddenly the pensions of the teachers have doubled over that time.
They certainly have.
I, I couldn't, you're saying that the amount of money that the people are...
Well, here's the way, here's the way, yes, here's the way I look at it. If the stock market hasn't gone up in 10 years...
Oh, but it has.
Well, it hasn't, all right? And if they are guaranteed...
And the S and P is higher than it's ever been.
Bob, go look at a graph, okay? But my point is, if the, if the stock market hasn't moved in 10 years, and we have guaranteed an 8% return for the last 10 years on the employees, that money has doubled, okay? But what we have guaranteed, so there is a benefit that all these teachers, all these custodians, clerical staff, administrators are going to get upon their retirement, that is, in essence, twice as much as they would have in this period of time. So when you look at that dollar amount, and then you say, hmm, we're asking you to give up one day's pay, I don't think it's too much to ask. Again, I don't care if the, oh, excuse me, I shouldn't say it that way, it, it wouldn't offend me if we were denied, but I think we're supposed to engage our largest cost pool to help us get to this budget, if we want to present this budget, that's all.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I, I mean, in theory, it totally makes sense that we all want to share the pain. My concern, which is one is the timing, which is, we've been meeting for months now, and if we really were seriously considering this, then, I mean, we might be seriously considering it, but I, I kind of wish we, I mean, and I do this too, sometimes I think of something at the last minute, but this is such a big concept, it would have been nice to kind of mull it over and think about all of the various implications that it would have. I guess the couple things that come to my mind is, it usually never hurts to ask, however, since we've made the determination that we want to go over the tax cap, and we're also looking at adding back things, it almost seems like we're probably not going to get the answer we want if we ask this year. I, my, we might, you never know.
Okay.
However, I, I mean, I feel like, you know, like last year when we really, you know, two years ago when we really needed, you know, help, and we asked them, we were able to come to an agreement and get it, but I would hate to ask them just for the sake of asking, and then if we really need it next year, we kind of, it's not going to be viewed with the same importance. It's almost going to be like the boy who cried wolf, like, oh, well, you ask us every year, so they never know when we're serious about it.
That's fine.
That's just a concern I have about asking, given what we're talking about doing with the budget, and then asking the teachers to bear the brunt when we're going over the budget and we're adding back all these things, it, I'm just, I'm not sure it sends the signal from the board that I want to send to the teachers, which is, you know, I individually support them and I think that I value them, and I feel like, as I said, if I look at them as individuals and the paycheck they've taken home over the past few years, they really haven't seen this increases because the contract's been, you know, non-negotiated. So, from my perspective, I just don't really feel that it's the year that I would really push for something like that.
Okay. I'm going to just add, Jim, I respect your bravery for bringing this up here, but I completely disagree with the timing of doing this on the meeting before we vote. I just think that is bad, bad sportsmanship, bad...
Well, it's not a sport.
It's bad board governance, Jim. You've had plenty of opportunity to express this idea for months and months, and I think coming on the heels, or coming on the, on the eve of this vote where we need to rally the community, I think it's politics, even though you're not running. It's, it's an amazing thing that somebody would, would play this kind of game with our budget, with a $53 million budget, with 1,800 students.
I appreciate your opinion, okay? I appreciate your opinion.
Let me finish.
Oh, go ahead, please, go ahead.
You had your longest question in the history of Jim McCann questions. I'm just, I want to register my vehement disagreement with conducting business in this way. I think this is appalling to me, and I'm very disappointed.
Okay, I, I'm sorry you're, you're appalled. I'm sorry that it's, it's bad governance on your, as you see it, okay? The reason I brought it up today is, we've had this kind of walk to the tax cap, and now we're going over the tax cap, and now we're going over the tax cap, and now we're going even more over the tax cap, and I'm saying, okay, at some point, where do we, where do we say, okay, we, how are we going to pass this budget? Again, it goes back to the budget, we've got to get 60% of the community, all right? So I, I, I am sorry that I'm bringing it up at the moments before the vote, or whatever, however you view it, I'm sorry, but I didn't bring it up before because I didn't think it was necessary, but if we're going to continue to, like, next week, there's going to be another request for another half of this, or a quarter of that, or this, and they'll all be good requests. But at some point, if we're going to keep asking, and we're going to keep our fingers crossed that we get 60%, how are we going to do it? Okay? It's just, and now, I think we can stop talking about it, because if Bob and Robin and Phil aren't in favor of it, there's no one in favor on the board to ask you guys to go back to the employees. So to me, this is, this is, we're done talking about it, all right? I, I think. Would you disagree? I don't see my banging the drum if there's...
No, I don't know.
You don't have to say anything.
I have no problem saying something.
All right.
For a variety of reasons, which basically everyone has touched on, but I am also not in favor of going back to the unions. I do not think now is the time for that, I do not think we need it. One thing to keep in mind is, these additions are additions that we as board members have asked for. Cuts have been made over the years, I think we're a great school district. These additions, I think, make us a very healthy school district. And if you just, putting it a little bit in perspective, currently, so the bottom line is, it's increased per $1,000 households, is that correct?
Yes.
For the bottom line.
It, it's increased per thousand.
Right.
Depending on your assessment.
So, the current proposed budget compared to, let's say we take everything in, in option two, let's just say, you're talking a price difference of $2.99 per household.
Per thousand.
Per, sorry, per thousand.
Value.
I get it.
I mean, and to go back to the unions now, and not only were they, when there was no contract, there was no freeze, but when they negotiated the contract, they also, you guys negotiated a freeze for the first year that they were working. I think it was a, I think everyone gave, they gave us when we needed it, two years ago with the work furlough days, right, two years ago?
Mm-hmm.
It was last school year that it actually hit. And I'm not in favor at all going back, because, and another point is, tonight, we have to give Chris the guidance of what we want him to go back and present in two weeks' time, and coming this... time, and coming this late in the game, I think it's, it's just too late.
Okay. Okay, I'd like, I guess at this point, I'd like to move on and take comments from the public. I'd like to ask the board if we could just take everything under advisement and just add it into our conversation, so it's more streamlined. Mr. Gold?
Yeah.
If you, if you can go to the microphone, please.
I'm Danny Gold. Just to give some perspective, I'm a former board member, former president of the board many, many moons ago, and I support the board exceeding the two percent tax cap. I support the superintendent's budget, but we are facing, as Jim has said, the sixty percent hurdle this year for the first time. And I know from having been on the board that you hear from the community about these additional programs, and as worthwhile as they are, there's a temptation to, to add. And as Maria said, well, it's a couple of dollars, and, but I urge caution in, in, in adding the programs, because it does get to the level that might possibly jeopardize our reaching the sixty percent. We also may have a contested school board election that may also factor in, depending upon the increase. So I came to this meeting tonight saying, I will support the budget that you produce, but I really urge you to be very careful in adding a lot of the additional costs, as enhancing as they may seem, to keep the quality of the school district, which is all our utmost concerns, but you may have to make some tough decisions and not go above very much what the superintendent has projected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any else, anyone else from the community who'd like to make a comment?
I don't often come to your guys' meetings. I'm Tara Taylor. I have two little kids in the system, one at Main Street and one at Dow's Lane, and I just, I'm glad I came. I will support what budget you guys come with, but I figure I might as well say that I, I don't really need any of those extra additions. I mean, I haven't done all the research that you guys have, and I don't have anyone in the high school, but I don't really see an extra studio art as being very necessary, and I haven't really felt like monitors really do much on the bus. If there's going to be problems, there's going to be problems, and I think there's problems one way or the other, if there's going to be a problem on the bus. So I've always thought, cut transportation wherever you can, because that's a luxury, it's not really necessary, and I think everybody in this town can get their kids to school if they need to. Um, and yeah, I think you should have caution. I don't think, you know, I think it's a lot at five percent, I do, but I'm all for it, whatever you guys decide.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the community who wants to say anything? Okay, um, I guess for purposes of our discussion, should we take some of these items individually that are proposed as either deletions or additions and discuss them? Is that the best way to go?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. Um, in no, I'll just go in the order that we talked about them, at least in the, in the budget presentation, uh, the maintenance position, which would, this is in the budget proposal, so it's something that if we were to not accept the proposal, we would reduce fifty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars from the budget. Um, you want to start?
Sure. Um, I think we're taking the one at the time, because it's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
I think it's, as I said before, it's very hard to not look at the whole picture when I'm looking at this. And to me, it's about prioritizing, and it's about keeping in mind exactly what Danny said, which is, you know, it's great, it's, I feel like we're fortunate to be able to long-term plan, to look at this year as the year we're going to go over, hopefully the next couple of years after. We won't take advantage of that to put things back. However, if I had to prioritize on, you know, in looking at all these other things and how they're directly related to the kids in the classroom, which is where I always come back, I really have to put the maintenance position at the bottom of that list, under everything else on the add-back list.
Maintenance.
The maintenance position, adding the maintenance position. And, I mean, in looking at the numbers that was presented on the prior thing, fifty, uh, I'm sorry, thirty-five percent of every dollar spent on that maintenance position is going to overhead. It is not going to directly fixing something at the school. It's fringe benefits. And that's what happens when we add a position in. And I know that you really want it, and I know that in the long run, I, you know, if I didn't have to prioritize, I would have to put it in, but from where I sit now, I would almost say I'd rather add, take a little bit more money and put it directly into the maintenance budget, and have each of those dollars go toward fixing something at the school instead of thirty-five percent of every dollar spent on overhead for this year. And that maybe the savings over time will outweigh that decision, but I guess, I, I just feel like we've cut so many years in a row that I'd rather see the classroom focused added back, and, um, that would, that would probably be the first thing that I would take off my list.
Okay. Uh, I guess, Maria, do you have a view?
I, I, I agree with Robin on this. Um, I, 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 I'm a very conflicted person, because ideally, I want all of that, but, um, like Mr. Gold said, I am very, I'm very concerned about getting that sixty percent vote. So I would also agree that the maintenance position is low on my, on my list as well.
Jim?
I don't know why I should talk, I already stepped on my foot, but, um, relative to what Robin says, I, I, I am in agreement that if we're going to try to bring in electives or a guidance position, and we don't want to increase the cap, increase the taxes, I would forego the maintenance, all right? I personally would forego all bus monitors. And relative to clerical, please don't take offense, Randy, I think you're the greatest elementary school teacher I've ever seen and heard of, but in my world, I talk to executives all day long who run multi-billion dollar divisions of corporations, and they don't have assistants. They do it all themselves on a computer. So I think we have to maybe challenge the clerical position, challenge the maintenance position, challenge the bus position, and put in guidance and electives. So any addition is going to the education format, and we just get bubble gum and banding wire for the maintenance of the school one more year, and we have a little more traffic on the streets, uh, coming and going out of school than we do now, and we ask Randy to have a headache every day he comes home from work in the summertime, and that would be what I would do.
So, so your maintenance out, clerical out, and bus monitors out for you, so that's, Phil, if you want to speak to maintenance, we have three...
Yeah, maintenance is an easy call.
Yeah.
I think we should take it out.
Okay, so I think you have, and I, I agree, so you have, Chris, you have five taking maintenance down to the bottom. I guess the next thing, because Jim brought it up, was the clerical. Jim would like to have that out. It was taking the clerical from ten months to twelve months. The reason, the publisher, you know, the reason that we can't go from ten months to eleven months, for instance, is because of collective bargaining, the, the unit does not want to do that, so it would either be ten months or twelve months. Do you have a view, either of you have a view on that?
Um, maybe here's where I would go back to the unions and see if maybe this is a place where they could help us out a little. If, I mean, if we were to add back eleven months for three jobs versus if we had to go to twelve months, then perhaps the discussion over the next week becomes, which, which one or two of the three do we do for twelve months? I, I don't know, I'm saying that's a possibility. Maybe, maybe when framed that way, I, I, I don't know where, how often we talk to them or where, where we're at on that, but, you know, I, I truly believe we need it. Um, I, I, I kind of feel like I saw, witnessed firsthand Dow's Lane, and, and in talking to Chris and, and everybody, I feel like, I mean, I mean, high school and middle school also have a, 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 a big need for, for help during the time period over the summer, when they're planning and preparing and scheduling, and a lot of parents are coming in. It's a relatively small amount of money, um, everything is, but, so I, I'm for the clerical. Um, if we could go to twelve months, if eleven, if indeed that was something that, you know, Chris thought was a good idea...
Eleven can't work, that's one thing we know.
No, it's just completely off the table.
Yeah, that, from a collective bargaining standpoint, they, they, we understand, they would not agree to that, right?
They won't revisit it, even if they were to not get all three.
Well, I don't know, but like, like with Jim's idea previously, I don't think that in two weeks, we're going to be able to open up collective bargaining and try to figure it out right now. So we're, um, I think, at least now, we know that they're willing to go to the twelve if we're willing to fund it.
They're willing, they're willing to go to the twelve.
Yeah, well...
They want to go to the twelve.
Exactly, right.
They want the twelve.
Well, but my point is, is that to, to get something other than that, we're going to have to open up the collective bargaining process. I mean, it's, it's, it's not as easy as making a phone call.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, I, let me, let me think about that, I was hoping that was possible, so let me, I'll come at the end, let me think about it for a few minutes.
Okay, to be clear, this is three positions we're adding.
No.
We're extending, we're going from ten to twelve for the high school, middle school, and Dow's Lane.
Right.
Okay. Um, my personal experience has only been, I've seen what has happened at Dow's Lane over the summer months, so if I make the assumptions that similar things are happening at the middle school and high school, and I kind of think it's a pretty easy leap to make, I'm in favor of this addition, actually, one hundred percent.
Phil?
I think in the context of the, the ask that the administration made was that we want to make sure that our building principles are being supported with the right staff, and I think it was Randy who spoke pretty eloquently in one of our earlier meetings. And in view of that, I'm absolutely supportive of this, especially considering that the money in the scheme of a fifty-three million dollar budget is quite small.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't personally see this as an extravagance at all. I think it's necessary, I think the, um, the, the folks who need the help are telling us they need help, and it's, it's not from lack of effort, I'm sure of that, so I'm in favor of adding the twenty-five thousand dollars into the budget. Okay, so we have three and a half for clerical? Okay.
Can you understand this? I was just hoping that if it made more sense in the budget, and if it was something that our administration wanted, that eleven months was an option.
Well, I, I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want to foreclose us opening up discussions with clerical to see if there is a way of somehow, I, I just...
I'm in Phil's phrase, I think you just did.
Well, no, 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 I, I just, you know, I, I, I had the same comment to, to Jim's point, I just don't think that, you know, to open it up, it's, in two weeks...
It's not, it's probably not feasible.
It's probably not feasible. That's it, I don't, I don't see any reason why we...
Yeah, I, I mean, but as, look, I, I think I brought it up initially, I clearly realized it's being there, and that I would support it, I just trying to figure out where we could save the most on each one.
Okay, so, so we're okay with you moving forward, I guess, with the, with the clerical? The next thing is, least in mind, the electives. Um, you know, I know we already had a bit of discussion about that, we understand, I think, as a board, that we can't circle the classes, but this is actually having money in the budget to provide the classes. There was a lot of comment about the fact that previous cuts over the years to the nineteen electives, the practical effect of that was students are sitting in study halls instead of learning anything, and this is to provide money back to the high school to make sure that they could provide substantive learning to the kids as opposed to study halls. At least that's the way I'm thinking about it in my mind, so does anybody want to?
Um, I'll just go right to the, um, guidance and electives, those are my two top, that I want to add back in, so...
So I take it you want the electives?
Um, yeah.
At what level? Why don't we, why don't we, if I might suggest go through, and if you can get consensus on the electives, then have the conversation with...
Guidance, can we, sir, sure. One second, and could you just address the sixty-four thousand dollar state revenue? Where did, where does that money go to that it could be used to fund anything, or just go in the general fund?
It went in general fund, but actually, it lowered the tax increase by previous presentation had been a little bit higher than that, so it lowered the tax rate.
So the sixty-four thousand of state revenue went to the general fund, it was not allocated to any particular line item?
It actually lowered the tax rate, yeah.
Which means you need to raise less money.
Fine, well, so if you ask me, we have sixty-four thousand dollars, right?
That's already in these numbers.
But it's in that four, four-and-a-half percent, so if I use that sixty-four thousand in the budget, that will raise your tax increase up to like four...
It's in the middle of it, huh?
Point six, something.
Okay, all right, I see how you're explaining it, okay. So it's really pretty much called, spoken for.
It's in those figures.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And also, there's a thirty thousand dollar addition to the health that was, right?
Right, I had to increase the health insurance line, I sent an email, and it's in the top line here, where I had to add thirty thousand dollars to the budget for Medicare reimbursements. Um, we just became aware of that. It's a direct reimbursement for retirees, and we don't know the rates until we actually get their bills in the mail, copies of their bills, and we've been getting them in, and in December, Medicare raised the premiums on almost everyone, and that's where we're failing to hit, so I had to add another thirty thousand for that.
Okay, so going back to, I guess, that's right, why don't, um...
Electives?
Yeah, on the electives.
My, I guess, then, Chris, what I'm thinking is, I, I agree with Maria, I mean, to me, you know, guidance and electives are, of this list, the most, my top priorities, um, but I'm thinking since the number is kind of, as Bev said, she just used it as a plug, maybe we'll circle back at the end, take a look at the number, because maybe then we could talk about, you know, is there some number we're trying to hit from a, you know, what would be optimal for us as we're looking at that sixty percent? I mean, everyone knows you price things at four ninety-nine, not five dollars, so, you know, you know, maybe we can come back and look at the, this number a little bit to see if there is a number that makes sense.
Well, I guess at least for this, we should, we should give guidance that we support a number, and then we'll come back to see what that number was, yeah?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I'm saying I support the electives clearly, you know, whatever, you know, the higher...
Yeah.
It would be more classes, but if we need to take it down from the forty-nine to make an, to make a budget increase, that's a little more palatable, I'm fine with that, Jim.
Jim?
Um, well, you know, if we, we're kind of houndling here, you know, and, um, if we want to come in flat, if we get rid of the bus monitors and get rid of maintenance, we come in with a, with a flat budget, if not a, a couple of basis points lower.
What do you mean by a flat budget?
Well, you know, uh, four point five two. Our, our budget number would not increase if we got rid of maintenance, got rid of the buses, included guidance, electives, and clerical, and we'd still have a tiny surplus left over from, on this, tonight's budget. So then, you, you, we kind of say ourselves...
No, they're all out.
No, those, those are still all?
If we eliminated bus monitors of ninety thousand...
They're already out, they're not counted into any of the math at this point.
All right.
I know.
Excuse me. Then we have a ninety thousand dollar surplus deficit to tonight's, all right, all right.
Okay, so on, on the electives, how do you, how do you feel about that?
I, uh, I don't have an opinion. I, I'll let the majority decide. I, I, I don't have an opinion, I think it's a wonderful thing to have. I am concerned about getting sixty percent of the budget. It's, this is, this is a coin toss for me. It's great to have them, but if, if we infuriate people who vote against the budget, we have a mistake, you know? This might be a Plan B thing, if we, if the budget doesn't pass, yes, so put it in, and let's see, let's see if the budget passes, and it's just that simple.
Phil?
Well, since I, um, argued for adding in the electives in the last meeting, I would continue to make that argument this meeting, so the only question is the thirty-seven, forty-nine, I just say thirty-seven as a placeholder. Uh, in terms of the guidance position, I think, um...
Well, let's just stay with the electives now.
Oh, I thought we were doing guidance as well, sorry.
No, no, right now, no, no.
Um, I guess as far as the electives is concerned, you know, I think the community has spoken pretty strongly to us that, that, you know, the, the cuts have had desperate effects among our different schools. One of the schools that have taken the hardest hit over the past four years is our ability to... is our ability to provide programs to our kids in our high school. You know, I'm, listen, I know we need to get a 60% passage rate. We had 63% last year. It was a shade over 63%. You know, I, I trust the public to understand what we're trying to do here. Our budgets have been very frugal. We're forced to go over the tax cap because of the state mandates. These are, these are things that I think our kids need in the high school. These are things that the parents are calling for, and I, I trust that the parents are going to vote the right way. So I'm for putting back the electives, as we discussed, in a, in a number that we could at least understand from the administration makes sense in light of the administration's plans. Guidance. Maria is for guidance. Any other comments?
Any other comments?
Nope.
Ms. Kerner?
I'm clearly for it, and I think this is our opportunity to really position the high school for future growth. I also think, as everyone knows, we are bringing out a new principal, since Dr. Mozenthal is, decided after his short time here to leave, that, that I think it's really important to set up a new principal to succeed and to give him the tools and the infrastructure he needs to really kind of do what has to be done with the high school and bring it into the, you know, set it up for the next 20 years. So for that, for those reasons, and, and, you know, and because again, I feel like our kids have suffered without a full-time guidance position, guidance chair. You know, I know there's not a lot of money in there. I think, you know, if we could set it up where it's even a little more of a senior position, then that would be a good thing. You know, we've talked about all that before. So I am definitely in favor of adding back the guidance position.
Jim?
I have no problem adding it in and keeping our fingers crossed. Our guidance department is woefully in need of help.
Phil?
Last year, we removed the half position in an effort to stay under the tax cap, and it was an experiment. And I think we can acknowledge now that it was a failed experiment. It didn't work, especially in the way that we had hoped. And I think, you know, it is, it's an act of humility to acknowledge and undo a mistake. And this is what I think we're doing here, is undoing a mistake that we made by adding this back in.
My own, and I have to, I have to throw credit where it's due. Robin Kerner and Maria Kashkin have led the effort to, from the board's perspective, to help look at our guidance department and help formulate this plan. So thank you for all of your work, and I echo Mrs. Kerner's views. I'm for putting back in the .5 guidance position. We're, we're to bus monitors. Let me start. I think I created this mess.
No, you didn't.
Well, it's been something that, that has been talked about for years, going back to the Budget Task Force. And I don't believe the Budget Task Force ever suggested that, that we were to cut the monitors, but it was an option. It was something that we could do as a, as a means of saving money without having to go to the voters. That's how it was presented to us. I think I was the one initially who asked that it be taken out of the budget for this year. Initially, I, I thought that the community would be fine with that. We're representatives of the community, clearly. We, of course, have to lead from the board, but we're also representatives. I found this to be a very divisive issue. The folks with kids in high school aren't at all concerned about it, of course. But when you start talking to parents of kids in Main Street and you start talking, especially to parents of kids in Dows Lane and parents of children coming in who have moved to Irvington in the prior years with their kids coming up and expecting to have the bus monitors there, I will tell you that what I'm hearing is fairly overwhelmingly that this is a cost that they not only want the district to incur, but it's one of those things that they like about Irvington. Dows Lane, I mean, I'm sorry, Dobbs Ferry maintains bus monitors for its K through three. Other districts have gone away from it. That was part of the, the evidence we had, the support that maybe we should get away with it. This is a tough call. I believe that the community and the 60% of the voters or more will support the bus monitors being put back into the budget. And I support the $90,000 being added back in. I jumped on that one ahead of time. Maria, do you want to?
I am very conflicted about this. As a parent, from a safety point of view, I quite frankly, I think monitors are a luxury, and I think it's something that we can cut. I'm very comfortable from a safety perspective of cutting it. But having said that, my fear is that this is going to be the one hot button issue that could make this budget that we're asking to go over the tax cap for, go down. So I'm very conflicted over this one particular item. I'm not sure.
Put you down as a definite maybe. Ms. Kerner?
Well, I actually, hold on a second. Don't kill me. Looking at the numbers, let's, if you add up the maintenance position and the bus monitors, that's just slightly over 140,000 that we're taking out from the current proposed budget.
No, no.
No, they're already out.
The monitors are already out.
The 90 is already, we already-
The 90 is in.
This is a discussion of putting it back in.
The 90 is in?
No.
Oh, you took the 90 out of the baseline?
It's already out.
Maintenance is, would be a negative to the budget, that's why.
All right, come back to me. I have to figure something out.
Robin? Skip you?
I'll come down.
Okay.
So, just so everyone knows, I'm, I'm not going to be on the board next year, and I'm not going to be living in this town next year, okay? So it's very difficult for me to say this, and you take me seriously. I've never seen the benefit of the bus monitors, even when our children took the bus. After they took it and waited an hour to drive around Irvington, we stopped driving our kids on the bus years ago. And so I say to myself, we have high school kids and middle school kids don't have, middle school has-
Everyone has monitors.
Middle school has the bus monitor? Oh, because we just buy the whole package, okay. High school kids don't need a monitor. Middle school kids don't need a monitor. Main Street kids and Dows Lane possibly. A lot of the kids walk. A lot of the parents drive them. The nannies drive them. The, the amount of families that get the benefit is a minority of the community. And again, I, I believe Maria has a very strong point with regards to, and I agree with it, that this could be a lightning rod issue for people to get out and not support the budget. So I am not in favor of putting it back into the budget. I am in favor of keeping it out of the budget, the 90,000.
That's a no.
Okay.
That's a no.
All right, Phil?
Well, I, I agree with Maria's articulation of the problem. It is a challenge to rationalize, including the bus monitors, because my own personal assessment is they don't dramatically enhance safety. However, the fact that there are numerous parents in town with young children who moved here, you know, sometimes recently, and they feel very strongly, I'm inclined to support the addition of the bus monitors because I think that it's an ambiguous notion to say that there's a 100% certainty that the bus monitors are going to, that lack of bus monitors will create a safe environment. I would rather err on the side of being safe.
Okay. Okay, going back to Ms. Kerner.
All right. You know, as you guys have said, I think it's, it's the one issue that I don't think there's a clear-cut answer. I don't think there's a clear-cut good answer. I think we're dealing a lot with perception and reality versus, you know, again, I'm all about making the best use of our money, and I, I probably don't think that's the best use of the money. However, a lot of other people do think that's the best use of the money. There's a few reasons. I, I ultimately, I'm sitting the fence, as you could tell, and I think ultimately, I would like, I guess I could see how the numbers play out. But for the small differential in the bottom line, that keeping the monitors is, putting them in is going to mean to the overall budget and to hopefully passing with the supermajority, I would hate for a budget to go down by three votes because we took the monitors out. So, and I know how important it is to a large group of parents, and I, so right now, I guess, I would say I would keep the monitors in, but I would ask two things. And one, I ask the parents to really try to pay attention the rest of this year and next year and come back with feedback. Like, what are monitors doing that's helpful? What are they doing that could be better? And I would also ask the administration if there's any way to maybe sit down and brainstorm with the bus company to see if we could make better use of the monitors, and you know, so have our dollars really count more would be the two things I would request, so.
I, I think those are, those are great.
Maybe they could teach an elective on the bus.
They could teach Mandarin on the bus.
Mrs. Kash, can you-
They're on the bus for an hour.
Do you have anything else to say before we?
Looks like you're doing math over there.
I had a whole idea and it just went up in smoke because I- I think what it was that they were, they weren't, I thought they were in. I'm very, I'm very hesitant to cut them because I'm afraid that it will go down for that reason. I really am. But I really feel strongly, I really don't see the need for them. From a safety point of view, I don't see that they make a difference. I really don't. So if you're asking me to decide right now?
Yes.
All right, I say they have to stay in.
I, I would like to echo, though. I think, Robin, your, your point is, is right on. This, this issue comes up every year. Whether I'm on the board next year or not, I'm sure it will come up again, and I would just ask that, you know, we all continue to do our diligence and figure out, you know, from the standpoint of, you know, I have, I have a son entering kindergarten, you know, my wife will see it, I'll see it. We just need to figure out whether this is money well-spent, and as Robin suggested, let's, let's, let's add the fact to the, you know, let's differentiate the facts versus the perception. I know that it's a tough issue. It's a tough issue for a lot of people. So have you gotten guidance from us?
Looks like option four on the slide before you is what you arrived at based upon my tallies.
Yes. Can I ask one thing? Go back with, I think it is option four that we're all pretty much agreeing on. And based on my calculations, you're adding another 161-ish thousand dollars with this scenario. You're coming back in two weeks. Is there any way that you can, don't kill me, look at some of the other options and shave a few things that you think we could live without?
The issue in doing so is that we don't have the opportunity to, to come up with different scenarios. So we come in and we run option number four, but then we, we give you a proposal that's going to try to find a couple additional efficiencies along the way. My concern is there isn't ample time. If we make a modification to that, to recognize the impact, calculate all the tax rate information, to be able to present that in the same evening without turning around to try and have a special board meeting, to be able to turn and meet what our timeline needs are.
Board has to go on a budget next coordinating.
Did you folks hear that?
I don't, I, I'm kind of with Maria. I mean, I think we have two weeks till the next meeting, right? So I think in the next two weeks, it's possible to find a few more efficiencies. I mean, is there a target that you're looking at instead of 4.77? And are we trying to hit a target? Because I personally think 4.75 is just, might be an easier sell for our budget than 4.87. I don't, that's a lot, though. I don't know if we can get that much.
I mean, it seems a bit of-
4.8? At least 4.85 then. It just sounds better than 4.7. If you're gonna, look, part of passing a budget by 60% is going to be, you know, how it's marketed also.
I mean, but you see, the, and I hear that from a, from an optics standpoint, but from a dollars and cents standpoint?
Still 4.85 instead of 4.87.
But then you're really talking pennies to the average.
Exactly.
Forty-five, $50,000.
It's easier to market. I mean, we're not substantially changing our budget. We're just giving us a, a number that's going to be in all the newspapers that people who haven't gone to the meetings are going to see and-
Yeah, I get it, I get it. So you're talking, we're talking about 50,000 bucks.
.01% is 4,800. So .02 would be-
8.7 to 4.85, 200% is $50,000.
4,800, I said.
That's what it is.
Oh, I have an extra zero?
Yeah.
I have an extra zero, so it's 5,000 dollars.
It's 5,000 bucks.
4,100 is, 4,100 is 1, 100.
Yeah, so it's two 100s.
Two 100s.
So we might not be over there.
It'd be about 10,000.
What do you think, Phil?
Do you want me to cut 10,000? Well, do you want me to cut 10,000 out of the maintenance budget?
Well, hold on. What's our, what's our, hold on a second. Wait, easier said, easier done. We have that, that 2% fund. What's in the 2% fund is-
What's 2%?
That we have, 2% reserve.
The fund balance.
The fund balance.
The fund balance?
Take it out of the fund balance. No one's going to know the difference.
That would be going forward.
If you're, if you're going to give, if you're going to give us a target of wanting to hit a number, and if we're looking at optics, we, we can find $10,000 and we will report to you next time where the $10,000 is in an area that's going, not going to impact-
Chris, let's not impact anything except the general fund by $10,000.
Should we just leave it?
I think we just leave it. I think it's-
Well, no, it doesn't matter. It doesn't- If we go to 4.85 and we take 10,000 out of the general fund, it doesn't matter.
It's a crazy thing, but-
Yeah, I just don't know 4.87 versus 4.85 is going to make-
All right, I can increase the appropriated fund balance.
You know what, if it wreaks so much havoc, then-
It's not.
Just let Bev talk for a second.
I can increase the appropriated fund balance by 10,000. It will not change the percentage of budget increase, but it would change the tax increase because I would be increasing the revenue side, and then that 10,000 would come out of your fund balance.
We're basically borrowing from ourselves to hit the 4.85.
I have no problem with that. We've been doing it for years, so just elaborating on it for once.
What's the exact target you want me?
4.85.
Okay. We have our marching orders. Have our marching orders? I guess, is there anything else that the board wants to add before we wrap things up?
Should we take comments again from the community or not?
Yeah, any clearing comments?
Is there any comments from the community before we wrap things up?
Hi, Esther Samra. I just wanted to speak to the issue of bus monitors. Maybe a good idea might be at the beginning of the school year next year, before the budget process begins, before everyone is thinking about money. Maybe there can be some kind of an effort, if you truly believe, I mean, the board and the administration believe that eliminating the bus monitors is not going to be a safety issue, that, that you could present some concrete information to the community in a very dispassionate way. Having this conversation during budget, I think, kind of ratchets it up, ratchets up the emotional level. It's very hard for people to see fact when emotion comes into it. So I'd like to suggest that maybe you can do some more research, you could present your findings, and do it in a, in a venue that doesn't have the charged atmosphere of the budget process. Then maybe you can gain consensus in that way and then move forward so that it's more of a, you know, progressive idea. And that could be helpful in the future. Thanks.
Hi, Tanya Hunt again. I would also say that one of the things that you guys may have heard, but you may not have heard, and I think it's worth also, in addition to what Esther said about bus monitors- Esther said about bus monitors, is that some parents who've come to Irvington have told, you know, some of us, me, some other people on the PTSA board, that one of the reasons they came here was not only because we had bus monitors, but in particular cases, families who had kids with IEPs did not request having an aide on the bus because they knew we had bus monitors, and I don't know if there's a way, you know, for, for Scott and Gail to like, you know, quantify that in any way, but, you know, if you're having a discussion early in the year next year, it, it's something to think about in terms of how that would work.
I, I had actually had this, I need to write it up to you guys, but I met with special, I had as a special liaison, and, and we had this discussion, and I don't know, may want to give Scott a minute to address that comment about IEPs, because I had the same question, I was like, if we're gonna end up with so many, we might as well just keep it in the budget. Yes, Scott?
Please, do you have any thoughts on that for now?
Could you go to the mic, just so people at home here, thank you.
Obviously, the consideration would be on an individual basis, and we need to look at it, I think the vast majority of students who need monitors on the buses are in out-of-district placements where the, where the needs are more involved, and so, and we're not talking about eliminating those, those situations, so I think, obviously, you also look at it, in order to have it on an IEP, it has to be directly related to the child's disability, not just a safety concern, or just a concern about, you know, I feel like we need a monitor on the bus, it would have to be linked, and it would have to be linked based on some evidence, so it certainly wouldn't be an immediate thing anyway, if you just come to a CSE meeting and say, I need a monitor, well, we need to, we would have to then determine why, and if it's related to the disability, so I, I can't say there wouldn't be any cases, there could certainly be some we have to consider, but I don't see that it would be a groundswell of necessarily that need.
Thank you, well, I think we're hearing that the board needs to take under advisement at the beginning of next year, this issue, and, you know, try, try to figure it out ahead of budget season, I mean, that makes complete sense. Is there anybody else that wants to have any comment? Okay, our next meeting is Tuesday, April 23rd, where we will, we will adopt the budget and move forward, so, uh, thanks everybody for attending, can I have a motion to adjourn?
She's moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks everybody.